Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Sunbury Council meeting. It's October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, seven thirty P M. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Amen.
But the victory is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of America, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please.
Mayor Saint John?
Here.
Mr. Capel?
Here.
Mr. Air?
Here.
Mr. Now?
Here.
Mr. Grumney?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Cooper?
Here.
Seven present?
We did have a meeting on October sixteenth, and we're looking for a motion on the minutes.
So moved.
Good motion by Mrs. Cooper.
Second.
A second by Mr. Capel. Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mr. Air?
Yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mr. Now?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, minutes passed.
Thank you. Are there any visitors that would like to speak with city council? Warren, come on up. Warren, do you want to check if the microphone's on? Thank you.
That's in one two. Warren Owen, one oh three Rainbow Avenue, Sunbury High. What I want to bring to your attention tonight is North Miller Drive from Wendy's on back to the school. I was waiting to bring this forward after they did the striping, everything on that road paving. They did to, I don't know if it's to the city's limit. And the rest of that back through to the school is school property for them to do, but there's no striping on that road going clear back to the school, which makes a hazard for two traffic to come to from school, especially at nighttime. So I want to bring that to your attention. The second part on that same stretch of road, there's no speed sign limits other than for school zone. And that's coming from the school and just entering the school. There's no twenty-five mile hours of limit signs on that street. Again, I think there should be, if that's a city property, even if it's a school property, there still should be more than just that one place where there's twenty mile an hour for the school. The third section is as you go on that section and you go around that, they say it's like a ninety-degree turn. You got street lights out there. There's two or three street lights aren't even working now. And it makes that turn coming right in that general area very dark, and that makes it a hazard again at nighttime. Then I want to bring to your attention on South Burnin', or South Miller Drive, as you go past Pizza Hut right in that general area. The parking lot where you turn into the left turn off Miller into Kroger's. When you come out of that parking lot, you got a turn lane to the north and a turn lane to the south. You cannot cross Miller Drive going directly across to the west way it's marked. Again, I've held off on this after the marking has been done. They didn't mark turn lane, turn in, turn out one directly across or put up a sign as you, by the curb side, making one lane going to the north turn lane that way and one going south turn lane to the south and directly cross. Every time you cross Miller Drive, go to Commonwealth Bank or into that section, you're.
Crossing Miller Drive without that sign. So I just want to bring that to your attention and see if something can be done with that crossing right there. I don't know if you knew anything about that or.
I did. I did. I think I've got answers for all four of your items. The first three, I believe, are all school. So the striping on North Miller Drive where it terminates at the, it's not a city boundary per se, but it's, that is, that's a school driveway is what that is. The mile per hour signs, that's also a school issue. Now, I can tell you, like, the intermediate school and the middle school, on their driveways, they have speed limit signs. They're typically lower than twenty-five miles per hour, typically like fifteen.
If that's the case, if they don't want those signs, can we move this sign more forward where the city limits ends and their school zone starts?
I don't know, but I'll have our engineer and planning staff review that. And then on the street lighting, I believe that's also the schools, and I know that a few have been hit. One has been hit for sure, and I know what you're talking about. It is pretty dark out there. Yeah, okay. I believe you on that. The left turn, right turn coming out of Kroger parking lot, that's been like that for as long as I can ever remember. I saw somebody go across the street. I almost called the mayor. No, but I also think that's on private property, but we'll verify that as well. So right. Not Miller Drive, you're right, but the turn signals, like, if you're at the Kroger fuel station, coming out, going towards Jersey Mike's Autozone on your right, there's only a left turn and a right turn. That's what you're talking about, right? I think that is private property, but we'll double-check that as well.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Any other visitors? All right, we're gonna go on to committee reports. Barry Bennett. Come on up, sir. What's your shirt say tonight?
I love it.
You got three minutes to talk about science.
Well, let's talk about common. Barry Dunn, fifty-four one Plantation Road. Since we're on traffic, I just have two items I'd like to bring to council's attention. They're both probably known already, but I'm gonna mention them anyway. One is my new residence area on High Street seems to be a racetrack. There are people going at extreme speed down there. I don't know if they're coming from Hartford, coming the whole length, but they are quite a bit now with the construction, and they are just flying thunder. So I don't know if you want to put your sign up for a while and try to calm that down a little bit. The other one is, we've talked about before, which is East Granville. Two items on that. One is there seems to be an awful lot of heavy truck traffic tearing up the brickwork again. I don't know why. I don't know if they're tired of all the trucks going the other way and they decided to use Granville. I don't, is that no truck area?
There's a sign that says no trucks, yes.
Well, nobody is taking that. Well, many are not taking that.
That's right.
The other thing is trying to cross that road on foot to get from the square to the coffee shop could be a life-altering experience because they are not stopping and neither stop sign now. Some are slowing down, so we're just rolling right through. We brought that up before. I don't know if there's a solution. But instead of talking about science, I figured that is all.
Thank you, sir. All right, East Granville Street, we've got Deputy Chief Wade back there. If you want to share exactly where you're talking about, we can get you on the list. I know that we probably need to invest in more radar signs and more personnel to monitor them, just with the rate that they're being requested. But thank you for bringing that up.
We are looking at two more of those before the end of the year.
Great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. East Granville Street, so many different tactics went through my mind on how to address, but I'm the mayor and I can't. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I was going. I don't know, like one of those Jeep tracks, like where you put a boulder or something. I don't know. Okay, thank you. All right, any other visitors? All right, we are on to committee reports. Ms. Drayer?
We have one. During the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission meeting, just a couple of things, I think, just to make you all aware that's surrounding us, that's relatively close to us. There is a Del Webb at North Star development, and it is a go. There are six hundred and twenty-four lots on seven hundred and seventy-four acres. It's, that's a large development, and that is going to be a go. And then there is a another development that's a little closer to us. Royal Green Estates in Kingston Township. And that one is going to have. Okay, actually, there's, what I wanted to say is there's so many dense or communities that were really packing a lot of houses in. There's a couple of developments that they've brought out that are gonna be a go, that are a little bit more relaxed. They have larger lots. Maybe this is something that we should look at and try and attract for here, closer to us. Royal Green Estates in Kingston Township will have twelve lots on twenty-eight point five-five acres. Summer Crest Drive on, I know you can't see that, and they're probably not online, but Summer Crest Drive in Berlin Township. That's Genoa, or near Genoa, ten lots on eighteen and a half acres. They're nicely spread out. Maybe, maybe we should start to look at a couple of these developments that some have got a lot going on. That's just some developments that are going on around us that seem to be a little bit more relaxed.
Those are all in the township, right? So they're all septic tank and home and access drive and shared utility structure, right? I mean, they aren't gonna have sewer lines and eighth roads.
Summer Crest isn't. Summer Crest is sewer. I know that one.
That one has sewer?
Yeah. Twelve. It's more, yeah, just developed up for executive lots. Those intended. There is a market for those. Some people want two acres. They're hard to find, really hard to find, especially over in Old Tangi where that is. So, yeah.
But, oh, also.
A lot of times that is the reason, though, is they have to go inside septic and you need a couple acres for that. The majority of the time, that's the way it is. Most developers, you know, it's triggered by two things, right? The property owner wants to sell it for as much money as possible. To get as much money as possible, the developer has to be able to sell as many homes as possible. Just makes more money. So that's.
Should have probably a little bit larger home, I would think.
But we'll see.
Yeah.
You'd think if they're paying more money for the lot, they're building a bigger house, but we'll see.
Also, if you haven't seen that Bixby Center or the new sheriff's department, it's worth it. It's pretty.
That Del Webb development, just for clarification, that's, those numbers have been approved since North Star was approved. So all that was approved was, well, number one, Del Webb is a new party in the mix. You know, that's gone through many different hands over the years, but the Wyler's are the ones who master developed that. But that number of units that's been approved of Del Webb product, which is a Pulte product marketed as a fifty-five-plus product, but not age-restricted, so. At least what I heard in public meetings, Del Webb is going to be marketed towards smaller lots, fifty-five-plus retirement product, kind of like an Epcot hub.
You can get online. It's big and open.
Yeah, the land, the acreage of land didn't change either. What they did is they compressed it in a way where they donated a significant amount of that land to Kingston Township. And they compressed it and they preserved a much larger area of space. So I mean, think like less sewer lines, more preservation parks, things like that, same number of units, so. They had to go through a reapproval process. Anything else, Ms. Drayer?
What is it?
Good deal. Mr. Grumney?
Oh, there is one working.
Okay.
They sent me home with a bill.
I have nothing. Cooper?
None tonight.
Good morning.
Yes, the Public Records Committee that meets twice a year had a meeting last week, and we approved many, many boxes of papers be destroyed, that have papers that have been around since the nineteen nineties and beyond. And they, they have to be, we have to submit to the state to be allowed to approve them. There are public records places that historical information places that look through every piece of paper that we want to destroy. They, they don't look at the actual piece of paper, but look at what they're about. And then we can't destroy them until we get an agreement from that state organization. So we've been given the okay to go ahead with some papers, and so we're gonna try to reduce the volume of papers that we have in storage around the city. So that meeting happened a couple of weeks ago, and it's coming up, so. We'll keep you posted on when the destroying happens. You might want to come and watch it shred or do its thing, you know, it's just, you never know.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Now?
Nothing.
All right, we did have a zoning meeting this week. It was a long one, just under three hours.
Wow.
It was, we had five, five items on the agenda, and I'll go through these just very quickly. The first item was a conditional use for a property on South Vernon Street. It's currently zoned C two. C two allows for housing. And it's supposed to be primarily a commercial district. Just in my interpretation, the commercial component of the C two district is supposed to service like the residents and be centrally located, and I think they reference things like bakery and floral shops and doctors' offices and things like that. This particular gentleman is working on it. He actually already is running an automotive repair shop, and that is approved only by condition or through a conditional use permit. The zoning commission can either approve, approve with supplementary conditions or disapprove. And there's a very specific set of time that the zoning commission has to act. It's, I think, thirty days, and the zoning commission elected not to act at the time despite a lot of progress being made. The primary issues were around parking, parking materials, screening, hours of operation, noise, things of that nature. So that gentleman will be coming back next month. The next item was a rezoning request. It was for the Wilcox property. We recently approved an annexation. It's on three Bs and a K. It's approximately sixty acres. It is, consists of planned commercial district and pleasant planned residential district that passed. There was another rezoning request for a residential hotel. This was D R K that submitted, and that did not pass. It wasn't tabled either. It was just not acted on, and they'll be coming back next month. Residential hotel, they're looking for a rezoning to plan commercial district. This is the first time a residential hotel has come through our zoning commission. It looks and feels like a multifamily apartment, but there's some nuances to like fire code and building structure and the way it can be marketed and things like that, that name it as a residential hotel. The next one was a building expansion for Ohashi. That was approved. Very excited for Ohashi to approve. I believe it's a twenty thousand square foot expansion. This will be their third or fourth expansion, which is very exciting. And the last one was an informal request. There's a parcel that's behind the fire station, and it's only about an acre, but it's for a daycare called Kiwi Clubhouse. The owner and their developer came in and presented. It looks like a really nice product and might be a good fit on that particular property. So that was an informal one. They're coming back next month as well, we believe. So that's it. All right, next item on the agenda is the police report.
Steve Howard. Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
First item up is the open house for the new building. We're really excited to get that finally on the books and getting prepared for that. I want to thank Amber and Daryl. They came down. We met. Amber was able to get the invitations out the end of last week. We got a few things we're buttoning up a set on. They'll be back tomorrow. The gas line is being put in tomorrow. If you haven't seen the new police sign on the front of the building with the lights, that looks, looks really good. We got the new floor in, so that's ready. It's, it's really looking good down there. Trick or treat tomorrow. We've had several questions about that with the weather and whatnot. But we, what I've told people is just listen, if it's weather permitting, bundle up and let's move on. The street radar sign information, I wanted to get to you last week. She had time to go over it, but I was ill, so I handed that out to you today. You can look over that. I'll get you the complete packets on everything, and we can discuss that at the next meeting. And if you don't have any questions, that's.
Did you put together an executive summary instead of all the raw data?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just like, here's the date, here's the highs, lows, on like one page.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Anything else, chief?
That's it. Had some training down there. If anybody's got any questions, I'll answer those, and if not, that's all I have.
Questions or comments for the chief? All right, good deal. Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you next Thursday, next Wednesday and Thursday.
Yes.
Council and the grand.
Yes.
All right, next item on the agenda is the administrator report, Mr. Hennessy.
All right, so just a couple of quick items. I have included in the report, the zoning report for the most recent month. I just want to note, I have identified, at least in the current month, the number of new building, new building permits issued. How many would be served by our wastewater plant? How many would be served by the Delaware County Sewer District? I think we'll go back and do an analysis on for the entire year, not just the month. And that may become important as we start talking about the wastewater treatment plant expansion in a little bit more detail going forward. So we'll try to gather some more data on that and get that to you. And a couple of important service department updates. We've certainly been talking about the corridor on Granville Street, where the thirty-seven widening will happen. Earlier this year, we tried to clean off the sidewalk to make that a little bit more pedestrian friendly. We did send our service team out, and they actually cut back some vegetation around the lighting in that area as well, so hopefully that will give more light in the area and create a safer corridor for pedestrians and people traveling there, through there with vehicles. And then I did want to note, we have talked a little bit about the crack ceiling efforts of the team this year. So there are a couple of additional streets and trails that they did with the G R E trail came up at the last meeting. And no sooner were we talking about that than the service team was out there to address that issue. So I do have on here a portion of South Vernon Street was scheduled for today. I don't know if that happened.
Out there.
Okay, well, I was gonna say, I thought you might know, so. So anyway, so they're out there working on that kind of stuff, so. If there are any questions, I'll answer them, but just, like I said, just a couple of brief updates.
Any questions, comments? Daryl, I had read your report online before we came in, and I saw this note about doing the General Rosecrans Elementary multi-use trails. Really excited. I reached out to Aaron Noblick, because I know he walks those woods like every day, multiple times a day. I had just said, Aaron, I heard we cracked sealed the trail to help preserve the life of the asphalt path. I respect your opinion. I want to see what you thought of their work, and this is what he said. Hey, Joe, everything's good here? Yes. I think they did a good job sealing the cracks. I told Jake, it's really nice that the city is taking such an interest in caring for our parks. So I thought that was really nice. Good job to Jake.
All right, now.
Thank you. Mr. Dabrowski?
Just one quick update for the group. The wastewater treatment plant expansion construction contract bid opening was last week. We unfortunately only had one bidder, and the bid came in high. So right now, we are working through next steps, going through the bid documents and trying to break down to see where we might be able to make some changes and potentially rebid, but we might not necessarily go that route either. So hopefully this time next week, I will have a little bit more information to share with you. Any questions?
Any comments or questions?
Are the bids from locally, or do they go out to all of Ohio?
So they are posted on a few different websites through our design consultant, C T. So they will reach out and try and get different people. The bidder ended up being local.
Local as in Ohio-based, the same firm that worked with us on the Little Walnut Creek interceptor extension. So I think they're out of Finley.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, we are on to resolutions, third reading. This is gonna remain tabled, resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dot one nine remains tabled. Resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dot two one, a resolution awarding the contract for the Walnut Street Stabilization Project to Ironsite Incorporated, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Capel. Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mr. Air?
Yes.
Mr. Now?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, resolution passes.
Yep, second reading, resolution twenty twenty-four dot two four, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute a grant agreement. And other documents required by the state of Ohio through the Office of Budget Management. For grant funding for a pedestrian bridge and related improvements to Granville Street. As a segment of the Ohio to Erie Trail Extension Project, reading only. Uh, first reading, resolution twenty twenty-four dot two five. A resolution ratifying prior council action to enter into a lease contract. With Crown of Dublin for police vehicles pursuant to their vehicle leasing program. Any comments uh? From the police or staff on this?
Yeah, so this is follow-up action to what we did at the last meeting. We said we'd come back uh to approve a resolution. I think it also then uh waves competitive bidding, at least it, I think formally does that resolution as well.
So can I make a motion to suspend the rules?
You're allowed to. Are you?
I just did. That was me.
Good deal. We got one by Mr. Martin. It's a suspension request. We got a second by Mr. Neff, discussion, we'll call.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yeas?
Motion on resolution twenty twenty-four dot twenty-five.
A motion by Mr. Martin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Neff, thank you. Discussion, we'll call.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yeas, resolution passes.
Thank you. We're on to ordinances. We have a couple of third readings, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dot oh one dot three, third amended. And ordinance amending the twenty twenty-four annual appropriations, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
We got a second by Mr. Grumney, discussion, we'll call.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Ms. Dreher?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
ordinance passes.
Third reading, ordinance number twenty twenty-four dot two nine. In ordinance approving the application of SGB Fund One LLC to rezone approximately two hundred ninety-eight point three-nine plus minus acres. A property owned by Forrest J. Hale and Marilyn R. Hale. And John E. Evans and Linda K. Evans located on Vans Valley Road. From not zoned to limited industrial district pursuant to the City of Sunbury zoning code and declaring an emergency. Looking for a motion on the emergency.
Motion on the emergency?
Got a motion by Mrs. Cooper on the emergency.
So.
Oh, I can buy. We'll give Ms. Dreher this one.
She said it first.
Second by Ms. Dreher. Discussion, we'll call.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas? Motion on ordinance number twenty twenty-four dot twenty-nine.
A motion on ordinance twenty twenty-four dot two nine. We got a second by Ms. Dreher, discussion, we'll call.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas, ordinance passed.
Good deal. Thank you. No second readings, no first readings, no unfinished business. Anything, Mr. Neff?
Not in your report.
All right, Mr. Martin?
Mr., I hope everybody has a great election day next week.
Excellent.
I'm gonna be glad when it's over.
Mrs. Cooper?
Nothing tonight.
All right, good deal. You got Mr. Capel?
Nothing tonight.
All right.
Real quick, I was just gonna say, um, we got the economic development housing report from Delaware.
Yeah.
If you haven't had a chance to look at it, it's fantastic. It uh opened my eyes a little bit. Uh, I know sometimes it's some barriers were torn between development and keeping that small town feel. But if you look at what this report says and the dire need for housing uh in Delaware County. Um, it really does kind of put everything in perspective uh as far as the need. Thing that stood out to me, people on the age group of between twenty and thirty-four cannot afford to live in Sunbury, Ohio. They just, they just can't. Um, right now, housing in Sunbury uh is about thirty percent of income. Close to that, which is is what most finance people say is the absolute max you want to be at when you're buying a home. Um, you know, personally speaking, I have a daughter who's a teacher and a, and her husband is a, is a businessman and they can't afford to move into Sunbury. It's a, it's a problem. And I think the more competition will drive down prices, the more different, the variety of homes, the types of homes. Will help drive um, drive up competition, drag down prices, excuse me. Um, and it's a problem for all of Delaware County, so it's not Sunbury only's problem to solve. Um, but clearly, when you look at the stats, um, it it's obvious that income doesn't keep up with it. And that's everywhere, but here particularly because people want to move here. And there's just not, uh, and in fact, if you look at the report, really everywhere throughout the state, we're usually number one. And a lot of these categories that you don't want to be number one in, which is high costs, you know, ex- expense. So um, it's it's fascinating read and uh, and I hope um, as we look to the future and plan that we do it smartly like we've been doing. And uh, really make this a community that people can move into and stay in. Um, because boy, I'd love to see Big Wana graduates graduate from Big Wana, go to college and come back and live here. And that's just not happening right now. Um, and I think the other thing is when we talk about housing, also uh people working in the Sunbury Delaware County area. We have uh according to this report, seventy-six point six percent of Delaware County residents commute outside the county for work. And uh, that's, that's not good because you want your people to stay in the community, spend their dollars in the community, pay taxes in their community. Uh, so and as we look at businesses coming in, that's another, uh, just another viewpoint to consider. Um, do we have the housing and the businesses to to keep people here um for, for a lifetime? So anyways, good read. I enjoyed it, so. Uh, it got, it came in email, so check your email.
Yesterday from Gene Hawes.
Yeah.
It just posted.
He, he didn't get it. It sounds like the council members may have gotten it. Okay. If you don't see it, I'll, I can forward you another copy. Yeah.
Think um, John emailed me today and said, I think we should review this with uh. Planning and zoning commission and our different boards. I mean, it's, it's really good information. I think there's a lot we can pull out specific to Sunbury. But really good recap on what it means to the people in Sunbury. Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anything new, new or unfinished?
No, I'm not, I'm good.
All right, good deal. All right, we're looking for a motion. Motion to observe, a motion by Mr. Martin.
Same.
Second by Mr. Capel, discussion, we'll call.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Apple?
Yes.
Ms. Dreher?
Yeah, uh, yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Seven yeas, we are adjourned.